Well, Noah's the same age Craig was, first time I've sworn in.
Really?
Exec's the same age. Okay, today is Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. We call the meeting to order with a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Feichter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Prochnow.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Everyone is here tonight, special night, and tonight is a special night. We got some swearing ends to do, new board being elected, but we're gonna get the people's work done first. We'll do the swearing ends at the end. Tonight, we have the elder Carmelo from the Trinity Gospel Church do the invocation, then we'll do the pledge after that. Especially if you want, Carmelo, please, everyone please rise.
Let's pray. Our Father God in heaven, we come tonight together before you to pray and lift up our leaders that you guide our government officials as they meet tonight. Strengthen them and give them wisdom as they make tough decisions. Lord God, guide them during these trying times that this meeting will be fruitful. Lord, we pray that you bless our elected officials, our mayor Craig Johnson and the board. Let your face shine upon them, our leaders, and be gracious unto them. We pray that they feel your presence during this meeting. We ask this in the mighty name of our Lord Jesus Christ, the name above all names, and with the love of the Father and the fellowship of the Holy Spirit, we pray all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Folks, be seated for a second. Carmelo, hang on a second. Please, I will do the pledge in a second. I'll give you something, thank you for being here tonight.
That's it.
Oh, you got it. And a special night, we're very giving tonight, we're giving you plenty of them tonight. So, there you go. Thank you very much.
No, he's doing something special.
Okay, something special tonight. Maximus, climb on up. There he goes, okay. Now, this worked out very nice, this is somewhat unexpected with all these guys being here today, but it's nice to hear, but anyways, part of the reason I'm doing this is Noah here, who's seen you before, Mr. Knickerbocker, sitting on the left during board meetings, all the rest, Noah's the exec's age that Craig Junior was the night the first time I got sworn in. Noah's nine, Junior was nine. That shows how long we've been going here, so, but Maximus is very proud. Maximus during school has been going to QR because the schools are closed. He's been going there for preschool and all that, and he was so proud one night when he came home because he stood there and told me the pledge allegiance, he learned at school. So, I said, well, what a better way than let Max say the pledge tonight, and I asked Noah to come down. Elk Grove has, I think, a phenomenal program. At some of the schools, they teach you from kindergarten on both English and Spanish. So, half the day you talk completely in English, half the day you talk completely in Spanish, and it's sink or swim for the guys, and I think that's phenomenal, real quick. When we used to have the bike race, we had the Belgian rider, or the Dutch, or... What rider is not Belgian, Denmark, the Danish rider is called. They all knew five languages. They couldn't believe Americans basically knew one language, English. So, it's good to see people learn that. So, we're gonna start off first with Max doing, not yet Max, doing the pledge. If everyone could please stand, the flag's over there. Max, it's all yours, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic whose it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
You'll get some chocolates in a second, relax, good job, great job. Now Noah, if you would please, this you'll do in Spanish, so, if you can, go ahead. Excellent, way to go, Noah. Okay, Noah. I'll tell you what, because I know you guys have been running around crazy. After the meeting, you guys all get chocolates, okay? So, let me forget, so, good job, Max, good job. Hey, I liked their hair, combing their hair, I haven't seen their hair combed like that before. Now, in the far back behind Michelle is the latest grandchild, number eight. How old is Lily today, about five weeks? Three weeks, so, we have a three. But actually, Max beat the record at the tree lighting, he was two weeks old for the tree lighting. So, but Lily's closed, and Michelle won't let me bring her down here, so, now, I'll wake her up? Okay, we're gonna get going with the board meeting. Hey, boys, you did a good job, Noah, thank you, Max, Maximus, good job. You watch too much Phil Mickelson, thumbs up. Okay, we move on now to approve the minutes of May 11th, 2021.
I move we approve the minutes of May 11th, 2021, and dispense with the reading.
Second. We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the director choose to have approval. Mayor and Board of Trustees report will be very quick one tonight. The main thing, first off, vaccinate, 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 vaccinate. Since our last meeting, it's amazing, everything's open, all wide open. What we all said, we're fine, set to go, so, we're in good shape. Masks are optional, things are good on that. Tonight, as I said, we get through a meeting swearing ends at the end. The only thing I want to mention is the, on June 13th, Sunday, June 13th, over at the Prince of Peace United Methodist Church, that's a church at the corner of Devon and Arlington Road, they're gonna have the Elk Grove Pride Celebration. This community is very open, I mean, we had Noah today saying pledge allegiance in Spanish. We're a very open, inclusive community, we signed a proclamation, I mean, Pride Month. We want to encourage people to get a chance to stop by there between 3:00 and 5:00 p.m. Over at the corner, you're gonna have a celebration and a fun, so, people stop by, show your support. We work together, we're an inclusive community, no matter where you're from, what your beliefs are, we welcome them all, and Elk Grove's a great town because of that. So, that is on June 13th, look forward to people being there that day. And that concludes the mayor's report, trustees' report, trustee...
What?
Can you believe that?
No.
Can you believe, wait, my speech after I get sworn in is about 17 hours, so...
Do we have to swear men today?
Trustee Frankie.
No report.
Trustee Feichter.
No report.
Trustee Zarnik.
No report.
Trustee Listner.
No report.
Trustee Prochnow.
Just two short items. I told you I'd have to do this. The annual spring Salt Creek cleanup is Saturday, June 5th. Anyone interested in volunteering is meeting in the Elk Grove High School back parking lot, and it will run from 9:00 a.m. until noon. For further information and to volunteer, contact Nick Nicola at creekguy@att.net, or give Nick a call at 847-828-1141. And it is my distinct pleasure to say that on Monday, May 31st, 2021, at 10:45 a.m., the Village of Elk Grove with the support of the VFW Post 9284 and its ladies auxiliary will be holding our 23rd Annual Memorial Day Observation. The ceremony will be held at the Elk Grove Village Park District Pavilion. We would be honored if you would join us. There will be a flag lowering ceremony, a gun salute, guest speakers, and refreshments afterwards. We should honor those that gave their lives in order for us to live in a free nation. The ceremony will be held indoors in the main gym. Now, what's changed since the last time I announced this is that with the governor dropping the face mask restrictions, we have changed our, we had originally talked about everyone wearing face masks and coming to the ceremony. That is an option, if you feel comfortable and you're fully vaccinated, you do not need to wear a face mask to the ceremony, but please feel free to wear one if you feel more comfortable, and we will have face masks available for anyone that would like one provided. And I look forward to seeing all of you on Memorial Day, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Schmidt.
No report.
Move on now to the accounts payable warrant for May 25th, 2021, and this is the village attorney's paycheck? It is. Forty-five cents goes to village attorney's paycheck, thank you.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant of May 25th, 2021, in the amount of $1,441,433.45.
Thank you. Second. We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. Jen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feichter.
Yes.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik.
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. Next, we have a consent agenda, tonight, we have items A as in Apple through K as in Knickerbocker. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. We have motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Listner. Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Anybody in the audience here filed a consent agenda? If not, seeing none, hearing none, we record the vote as previously demonstrated, six to nothing. And we have no items under the regular agenda, plant commission, zoning board, Mr. Romo?
No items this evening.
Okay, committees, youth committee. Trustee Frankie.
Okay, I just need to announce that we are having an executive session meeting on June 5th at 10 o'clock in the Churna Conference Room for the youth committee to decide the winners of our scholarships. We will let everybody know the following week who has won. Are we going to be able to have people in on our...
Yeah, they won't come get the awards on June 15th?
June 15th?
Welcome to come.
Okay, that is all I have.
Thank you. Business Leaders Forum, trustee Listner.
Thank you, Mayor, we made an ambassador visit today, which I'm anxious to talk about, but I'll hold it to our next meeting because this was really a very interesting company to visit. As far as what's going on in enclave, it's still very busy as, as normal. I've been attending several classes online, and it's great to hear the outstanding presentations by Mr. Dallas, and also the participation by the class members, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Kamau, tell us your committee, trustee Listner.
Yes, one thing, Mr. Mayor, Comcast made two changes. On May 13, May 13, WCPX, I don't know if you watch that one very often, the Bounce HD was added to the basic channel lineup. It's channel number 355 and 1164. But maybe more important, there's now a MeTV Plus for you people that like to watch MeTV. And MeTV Plus is now number, channel 361 and 1168. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
No report.
Information Committee, trustee Listner.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, just one thing, this is the last week for the Police Department Citizens Survey. It ends on May 31st, and it only takes a few minutes to participate, so if you haven't participated yet and you would like to, just go to our website, www elkgrove.org, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feichter.
Just a reminder, we have two big recycling events occurring in Elk Grove Village on Saturday, June 5th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at our public works facility. Please come by if you have papers that you want for our document destruction event or electronic recycling. So, come there at that time, and the following Saturday, we're going to have paint and motor oil recycling. So, I, these are two big deals, we always get lots of people, so, please don't forget, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Just to remind you, the hometown parade is scheduled for Saturday, September 18th at 2:00 p.m. And again, our Community Character Coalition is our grand marshals. The next parade meeting is Monday, June 7th at 5:30 p.m. In the lower level of the Charles Zedek Municipal Building, and that concludes my report.
Personnel Committee, trustee Frankie.
No report.
Judiciary Plan and Zoning Committee, trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Capital Improvements Committee, trustee Zarnik.
No report.
Airport update, we're still waiting to get the flight quiet, nothing yet. Midsummer concert classic series go quickly, we're opening up on July 4th with Daughtry. Remember, bring your green ribbons that day, get a green ribbon, I'm gonna be buying hundred dollar gift certificates to differ us from throughout Elk Grove, we're gonna draw them out. The winners will get a hundred dollar certificate, support our restaurants here in Elk Grove. Then we have George Thurgood Destroys on the 13th here at Town Center. 23th, we have Loverboy, and the 27th, they're talking about them on the news channels today because concerts are coming back, they said, and they got mentioned Beach Boys are playing this summer. They didn't say Elk Grove, but they said they are playing this summer, so they're coming. Special Invincence Committee, we have Memorial Day come up, trustee Prochnow will talk about, no report at Liquor Commission, any report, Mr. Romo, manager?
Mike comes a huge surprise, but I have no report this evening.
Village Clerk, Jen.
No report.
Any new business items to be brought tonight before we do the swearing ends? And as always, there's nothing under the attorney, nothing's changed after all these years. Remember, 48 months, Mr. Knickerbocker, and it's on the record now. And anybody in the audience wish to address the board tonight? Yes?
I wasn't going to, but I decided to. Is that all right?
Sure.
My name is Helen Lasky, I live at 1490 Hoddlemere Lane in Elk Grove Village. I've been there for 40 something years, and I go to the post office every other day doing something, I'm going there. And there's a house that's on Land Meyer and Forest View. It is a disaster, and it looks like a health hazard. I've mentioned it to the board two weeks ago, and I know everybody's busy, but to pick up a phone and just try and call somebody to do something, I heard it's not village property, but somebody should have influence to take care of this place, I've never seen anything that bad.
We're well aware of it, Helen, and no one's more frustrated than we are. We hear about, this is not the only house we found all the time. We are working on a program that'll be coming out in the next couple of months that's gonna address these issues in the future.
It'll be over, it'll be over the house by then.
I know it's brand curse, but we have them in Elk Grove too sometimes.
Yeah, but that's not ours.
So, we have contacted the county already, and we're at the mercy of the county. We have no jurisdictional control on those folks, we can't do anything if we want to.
Whoever owns this stuff, you can't talk to them about it or anything?
There's more going on behind the scenes than we want to say at this time. But we're well aware of it, trust us. Helen, I agree with you, we've all seen it, we're gonna be on it.
I've never seen anything really that bad, I couldn't even see the house.
It's scary, so, we're on it.
Okay, another thing, I don't understand this. On the TV, they mentioned about Elk Grove Post Office having all kind of problems with mail and everything. I take my stuff there all the time, and I bring it in, so I don't leave it out. And I'm not saying this time once in a while I do, but it took a month to get one of my bills there, and I got charged for it, so then I paid them to pay it up, and then it got screwed up because then, when I paid it, they sent another bill, or the, the bank had sent the money, and I got charged again because I canceled the second one because I had paid it, so it took me, I don't know, over a month or so to clear the whole thing up because of that issue.
Helen, you're not alone, we have no jurisdiction on it. I've met with the, with the Postmaster General two times for their, I don't know what to say.
Yeah, I don't, is there two post offices?
Your best thing to do, Helen, contact Rajah, our congressman.
Yeah?
Let him know, he's very responsive, he does a great job for us. Let Rajah know, and tell him that the board, you came to the board, and the mayor and trustees told you to give him a call. Try him, I know, it's frustrating.
One quick question, okay? My property, I have on the, not the parkway, but on my property on the corner, I have paid landscapers to put some stuff in there. Pets are always urinating, if they do it on the, on the village side, I don't care, but when they're doing it on my property, I'm gonna put something up there, you know, keep pets off the property.
We've put notices out in our newsletters several times, asked people, please, keep them on public property. I mean, people are walking...
I mean, it's not...
I know.
But it's killing my stuff.
I know. I mean, I put up...
Can't do anything about it, really.
You may want to put up a little fence or something along there, maybe keep the wires...
I'm just gonna put a little thing, keep pets off property, and see if that...
Give it a try, see, hopefully they'll be good neighbors and do listen.
Yeah, I hope so. Okay, sorry for all the issues.
No, it's fine.
Sorry, everybody.
Here every week, you can do it.
Anytime. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? If not, I see V's not here, okay, that's fine, that's fine. We'll go ahead and get started then. She up, Michelle? Yeah? She your grandpa, right? Huh?
Yeah?
She's not crying.
Go ahead. Maybe you have to get sworn in first.
Okay, again, we're, tonight's a special night, as everyone knows who's here and maybe watching. Three trustees ran for the spots, they all want, did we, we certified them last meeting or this meeting, did we do it? Last meeting, okay, I want to make sure, because we had to, I think it was last meeting. And so, trustee who reelected was trustee Frankie, trustee Prochnow, and trustee Feichter. And I was reelected as mayor for four more years, so, to get started, we'll go by seniority. So, trustee Frankie, if you'd join me down here?
From the senior one?
From newest.
So, you're saying the lowest?
No, no. I'm happy because I got my, I got my little stepping thing here, so I can stand up here, so that's...
Which way?
Everyone, get on this, there you go.
I know, you like your side this way.
My good side on TV. Noah, should I swear, should I swear in, Mr. Frankie?
Turn around.
Hang on, take a look, should I swear in, Noah? Thumbs up or down?
Oh!
Now, wait a minute.
I know where you live, kid.
Now, Noah, Mr. Frankie's good friend with Mr. Carlson, and is Mr. Carlson's grandson one of your best friends? So, you want to change your vote now?
No.
Oh, doctor, I'm gonna overrule you, Noah.
I know your other grandpa.
If you raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jeff Frankie.
Have been elected to the position of?
Have been elected to the position of...
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Dues solemnly swear.
Dues solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office of...
The duties of the office of...
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All yours.
Step on your... All right, it was a very hard fought battle, but I was able to pull out enough votes to make it, so, I do appreciate, obviously, nobody ran against us, but I would like to thank everyone who was involved in getting our petition signed. They really stepped up and helped out, and I thank every one of you that did that. I'm, I'm not done yet. He gets an hour. I would just like to say thank you to the people of Elk Grove, and I know, obviously, you know, the election this time, nobody went against us, but majority of the people come up and say we've been doing a great job, or they approve of what we're doing. I'm, I'm just so lucky, I've lived here for 61 years. So, I love this town, I will be involved in this town as long as I'm alive. So, I thank everyone that I've run across, even with your opinions. If you see me out on the street, I know people like to give me your opinions, but whether you like things or don't, tell us, because there's a lot of stuff on Facebook and other places that aren't true, right here is the people you need to ask and will tell you. You may not like it, but it'll be the truth, so, and this will be my last term, so if anybody's looking in four years to run, start planning, because I think it's time for some fresh ideas and some people to carry us for the next 40 years or 50 years or whatever, so... Again, I thank everybody, and I look forward to serving with everybody for the next four years. Thank you.
Michelle, how's she doing, good? Keep thumbs up, two more people, then she might be making a first television show. Got her the latest and the newest, yeah, we'll think about it. Chris, come on down. She'll hang in there, Michelle, she'll be good. She wanted to make her television debut. Make sure you spell her name right, one L, right? Okay. Oh, you're there. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Christine Prochnow.
Have been elected to the position of?
Having been elected to the position of...
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Dues solemnly swear.
Dues solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office of...
The duties of the office of...
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. You know you've done this a lot when you have it almost memorized already. I did write down my speech this time because this probably, no, this will be my last term also, and I wanted to make sure that I thanked everybody involved. So, first of all, I would like to congratulate Mayor Johnson, trustee Feichter, and trustee Frankie on their reelection to the board. Secondly, I would like to thank the residents of Elk Grove Village for reelecting me to another term. I am honored to be serving another four years with, in my opinion, the strongest and best board we've ever had. I would like to thank my family for their support, especially my wonderful husband Alex for always being there for me. I am proud of the 24 years that I have served on this board. I am just as excited to be reelected as I was when I was first elected. It is an honor to work with such a talented and hardworking staff, thank you. And this is truly, truly the exceptional community, and I'm honored to be serving you again, thank you.
Last, but not least, trustee Feichter.
Oh, hug me and kiss me. Jeffrey wants to speak for me.
Wait, he's got three times as much words to say.
I got three, I got two more.
Raise your hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Pat Feichter.
Have been elected to the position of?
Been elected to the position of...
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the State of Illinois.
In the State of Illinois.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Dues solemnly swear.
Dues solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge...
And I'll faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office of...
The duties of office of...
Village trustee.
Village trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God. Well, since I'm the senior of the three that were sworn in, I have a little bit more to say, but not a whole lot. I wanted to, first of all, say, you know, I've been on this board now for over 24 years, and I also, before that, I was on the plant commission for seven years in Elk Grove Village. So, I've had a lot of experience in Elk Grove Village, and I've enjoyed it so much. When the decision came up to run again this time, I had to make a big decision whether or not I wanted to run for one more term. And I thought about it an awful lot, and I then thought, well, will my wife support me doing this again? And I had to talk to her and persuade her, because I had told her in the last election that that would be the last time. But I told her that I felt what I was doing was something very important. Important in the village, but also important to me personally. And I, I think I talked her into supporting me, and I really appreciate that she did. It was a difficult decision for both of us. I want to also say that in all these years, I've been so happy and so lucky to be with a wonderful board that exists here in Elk Grove Village. They are terrific people, and we have a mayor that spearheaded so many great things. Just recently, you know, I, I took a ride through the technology park, and I was so proud to be able to ride through there and, and see what a really remarkable place that is. And I think, you know, I had a small role in that. And then I look around at the places in our industrial park, all the things that are good things that have happened in Elk Grove Village, and I think about the, I think it was in the last few meetings that we've studied the, making big changes in our streets, and our sidewalks, and drainage issues, things that will affect Elk Grove for years to come. And I'm so proud to be part of that. Now, none of us on this board could do this without... Now, none of us on this board could do this without a wonderful staff. The people that we have here working in Elk Grove Village are the very best anybody could ever want to have. I've known all these people, and I've worked with them, and they are really dedicated to Elk Grove Village. And they, you know, they're, they're talented. I just hope that none of them get stolen away because they are so good. So I'm so proud of them. And one last thing, the residents of Elk Grove, I wanna thank them for, again, supporting me and the others and keeping us on the board. I think if they were unhappy with what we're doing and with the programs that we've had, they would have risen up at this last election and let us know that. And they didn't. It always seems like they really support what we're doing. So I thank all of you, and I'm hoping to go ahead and serve my term. Thank you.
Okay, this is unique, first and last of the generation. This is little baby Lily. She's three weeks old. Remember, I brought little baby Max at the time, two weeks old, to tree lighting, so I figured I might as well get sworn in with Lily there. Hi, Logan, did you stay there with, with Bobby? You're good. Okay, go ahead, I got my hand up. Go ahead.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Craig B. Johnson.
Having been elected to the office of mayor?
Have been elected to the office of mayor.
In the village of Elk Grove Village?
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
And the counties of Cook and DuPage?
And the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Duesomely swear?
Duesomely swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duty?
I'll faithfully discharge the duty.
Of the office of mayor?
Of the office of mayor.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. Thank you very much. Well, thank you, chief. It's been a while, but I'm used to kids, don't worry. Okay, you're okay, sweetheart. There you go. There you go. This is a surprise. I did not expect the whole family to be here, so it means a lot to me, because the reason all of us are here serving is for everyone out there. It's for the next generation, the generation thereafter. And for you all to be here means a lot, and I thank you. I do wanna thank all the residents of the village. I wanna thank the businesses in the village, staff, Ray, you got the best team, bar none. We do not succeed without your team, and I thank you on behalf of the village for what you have here in Elk Grove and the board. We've really been through a lot over these, over these years, and we've got a lot done. Kinda surprised me to have one announcing tonight, and I've been telling people for a while, this changeover coming to this village, folks, it's coming. I'm not gonna say anything definitively tonight, but change is coming. You know, there are trustees, we'll see where else too. But I tell you what really gives me a lot of hope. Right, Lily? Beautiful eyes. How well this village did the past four years. Went through groups of people trying to break this community apart. Went through a great pandemic, and this village has come out stronger than it's ever been before. This village has never been so united as it is now. Just, we see this with people. We see this with the businesses. We see how well the village is doing. And the reason it did so well during these tough times was because we've worked hard, staff has worked hard, the residents and businesses have worked hard. For these past twenty-four years, we've basically been together, and we've built up a strong community that can withstand anything. If we got through these four years, we can get through anything. We've done it. We should be proud. We should be proud of this community. And every day, I'm proud. Someone says where you're from, I don't hesitate, Elk Grove Village.